Our first was in 1742. And our 283rd is today. That's really kind of amazing. Good morning, here we are again. Thank you for being here this Saturday morning. Let's do our country's pledge of allegiance. Would you stand please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and our universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated and you are. Two or three reminders. If you've got cell phones on, please put them on mute. You know where the entrances and the exits are by now? You know where I think the Girl Scout cookies are? Are they out there? That's okay, okay, well I missed them at the election, so I gotta get out there before I go on. We are now the legal and continued body for conducting the Town of Brentwood's legislative affairs. We are continued from last Tuesday, March 14th, Election Day. My name is Richard Chamberlain, Dick Chamberlain. My family and I moved to Brentwood in 1971, where I still am, and have been here ever since. And I am your elected town moderator. Okay, here's the paragraph quote. "We are here today representing more than just a legal body of 3,399 registered voters, out of a town population of roughly around 5,000." I'll say that number again. 3,399 registered voters. Of which, by the way, 998 actually voted last Tuesday. Outside New England, many across the United States look at our traditional town meeting system as something really quite unique. As a place where democracy prevails. As a place where each of us is a potential legislator, conducting business through our town meeting. Some have referred to town meetings as the best example of pure democracy. And I would add to that our Candidates' Night experiences, which this year happened to be at the community center. Talk about pure democracy. We had 23 candidates for town and school office. Each was about a three-minute presentation of what they hoped to do if elected. And then the other half was spent with the public, and we had a full room, asking questions of the candidates, which was very nice. Okay, okay, now a personal observation. This is my 45th in last year as town moderator. I started in 1979, and had been re-elected every two years since that time. Here's a way of looking at it. When I started in 79, our son Ian was 15. Today he's closing in on 60. Think about that verse again. Anyway. Okay, a little bit more. Two years ago, roughly two years ago, I decided that partly because of my age, I'm 87 now, partly because of my age. But more than that, because I felt that there was a need for whomever next became town moderator to be an awful lot younger than me, so that if you wished by voting, and they were the right person, they could continue on for many years, as I have. And so what I did was that I started asking people who they would suggest. Who did they think might be a person who could be impartial? That's the number one thing, to be impartial. Not to be locked into Republicans, not to be locked into Democrats, not to have a burning desire to represent a particular organization. Somebody who would be absolutely impartial, as well as somebody who professionally could handle the position of town moderator. So I asked people from the Select Board, from department heads throughout the town. Everybody, everybody. Everybody pointed to Melissa Handler as the person that they felt could fulfill that role. I invited Melissa to my home for lunch, and we talked about it. And Melissa had an interest. She had an interest. A little bit about Melissa. She was on the Budget Committee for a few years, so you've seen her there. For over 20 years she's been a Litigator Attorney for Fermi Company, as well as being Chair of the Executive Committee. And Melissa is an impartial human being. She has that ability. Melissa said, "I'll think about it." And she did. And then the next step was that she was willing for me to appoint her as my assistant for the past year. And that gave her an opportunity to see what the job was like and to do the job, fortunately. Well, Melissa agreed to run for office. Nobody ran against her, certainly not me. I did not put myself on the ballot. And she won overwhelmingly. And will, in a few minutes, when I saw her in, be pronounced our next town moderator. I want you to know two things. I want you to know two things. I am enormously happy that Melissa is my successor. I am concerned first for the Town of Brentwood, and second for me. And that's why I went through this process this past couple of years. And it was a good process, and it resulted in a wonderful person for the position. And secondly, I'll tell you, that I really love the position, and I'm sad to be leaving it. But I'm still in Brentwood. So that's the end of my personal privileged comment. And I really believe that that applause is for two of us. Yes, for myself, but also for Melissa. Since we are a continued town meeting from last Tuesday's election, it's my responsibility to announce the election result. I'm going to call you by name, and as I do, would you come up here and stand in a line facing the audience? For town moderator, Melissa Handler. For Select Board, John Morgan and Lety Badar. For Town clerk, tax collector, Daphne Wass. For supervisor of the checklist, Linda Gray McDonald. Municipal Budget Committee, Kat Nemirovsky and Alina Arida. Cemetery trustee, Gillian Benedict. Trustee of the trust funds, Julie Avan. Planning Board, Kristen Albert and Doug Marino. Library trustee, Jeff Donlin and Tom Walker. The school provisions, moderator Doug Cowley, treasurer James Sullivan, clerk Heather Haggard, school board Megan Fitzgerald and Daniel Heber. Is there anybody that I have missed? That I have left out by mistake? But I need one of them to read. Thank you. It is customary when we do this to hold up our right hand, for whatever reason. I, and would you repeat your name?
I, Doug.
Of Brentwood, do solemnly swear that I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America, and to the state of New Hampshire. And will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God. I, in your name again, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent on me as in your title according to the best of my abilities agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. Thank you, that is the end of it. And for a few moments, you've got two town moderators here. Well, folks, I understand that the line goes all the way out to the parking lot. Still. So I'll slow down just a little bit.
There's more seats up here in front, spread throughout for people that don't yet have a seat. Maybe if you've got a seat next to you, wave your hand so people can find a place to sit down. Thank you. Hey Dick, since we're waiting for people to come in, Dick just told you folks about his 45-year career for the town. For those of you who have a copy of the Town Report, you'll see that this year's Town Report is dedicated to Richard Dick Chamberlain. And I'd encourage you all to read the really nice little write-up about him that's in there. And considering asking him about the Dick Chamberlain Memorial Perch that's mentioned in here, if you catch him during the break. We are so, so thankful to him and the couple hours left in his moderator career. And for those that were at the election and at some recent events, he had, at a recent Select Board meeting, we dedicated the Town Report to him. And the library notified him that he has an honorary permanent chair that has a nice plaque on it at the library. And the Select Board also has a gift for him today. So Dick, we'd like to give you this gift. And it's an engraved snow globe for you. And we're so, so thankful for you.
Okay, while we're waiting, I'll give you the answer to the question about the memorial perch. I've been a camping person all my life, and for 20 years I directed summer camps. I've only had one building ever named after me at Camps Andover and Waldorf in Meredith, New Hampshire. The original perch was called the golf course because it had 18 holes on it. And that was finally destroyed. And then the gataffender and I put together the new toilet building. And I was in my cabin one day when I heard drums in the distance, and I looked out and I saw three of the staff members walking towards me beating drums. And they picked me up and carried me over to the new toilet building, which was surrounded by all of the camp staff with toilet paper wrapped around it that I cut with scissors. And it was named with a gold brass plate, the Richard K. Chamberlain Memorial Perch. When the camp was eventually sold, and it was going to be used for real estate property, two of my staff members sneaked in at nighttime and took the plaque off the toilet building. And I have it in my living room at home. Do I have stories? Yes. Okay, okay, we'll move on. RSA 40 of the state of New Hampshire provides that the moderator may prescribe the rules and procedures, but such rules may be altered by registered voters present, by yourselves. Although the statute grants the moderator extensive legal powers, these powers may be reversed by your majority vote at town meeting. If you collectively disagree with the ruling that is made, you may overturn it by majority rule. And by the way, when I finish this opening presentation, I will then present a gamble to Melissa. And Melissa will then, as your new town moderator, handle the presentation of the 14 warrant articles. To have orderly town and school meetings, and for all of us to be on the same page, Doug Cowley as school moderator, and I as town moderator, years ago wrote Rules of Procedure. The rules are printed on pages six and seven of your Town Report, and also have been published in the monthly Brentwood newsletter. I will highlight just a few, actually seven of them. Brentwood has doubled in population since my family and I moved here in 79, which means that there are new folk at town and school meetings each year. I would guess if a number of you are new to our town meetings. Consequently, I'll highlight those seven basic rules. First of all, number one. This is your town meeting. You determine the length of discussion and when we recess or adjourn. You determine any need for a continued town meeting. And one year we had three town meetings in a row, night after night after night, because we had two bond issues when we were dealing with school and libraries. Number two. You may participate in discussion and voting only, only, if you are a registered voter in the Town of Brentwood. If you are not one of today's 3,399 Brentwood citizens listed on the voter checklist, then an affirmative vote of all of us present is required for you to participate in discussion. And again, only in discussion. Give you one quick. A number of years ago, there was a request from somebody from Seabrook to speak to all of us. And we all voted that that person could speak. And then what he was speaking about was the possibility that Seabrook's nuclear waste could be dumped in Brentwood. And he didn't really talk very long. When you wish to speak, please come to the floor mic. And when I recognize you, when Melissa recognizes you, hold your voter's card high and state your name and your Brentwood address. This further ensures that you are a registered voter. Conversation must take place through the moderator and the person speaking. Now, please note, the supervisors of the checklist, would they stand? Charles Skip. Oh, of course, of course, I said. Well, the three of them, Kaylee DeVore and Linda McDonald, double check to make sure that each speaker is a registered voter. We need to do extra careful about those who are not registered voters speaking or in any way influencing discussion. Well, the Attorney General's office and the Secretary of State's office watch us like pox. And here's a good example. Two elections ago, I suddenly received a phone call from the Attorney General's office saying that they had received three or four phone calls from the election that we were at at that moment, saying that they felt that a ballot clerk was using his/her phone to drum up business for people of that person's persuasion. I went and sat down next to that particular ballot clerk, and what I found out was that no, that's not the reason that the phone was being used. It was because the person was absolutely cold and was calling home trying to find her husband to bring a coat. Consequently, we have asked ballot clerks not to make any phone calls at all while they're doing business with the town. Okay. Calling the question or closing debate, when does this happen? Generally, out of frustration, when there's a lengthy discussion and people wish to vote. Really isn't used to stifle discussion, but that can be attempted. My style as moderator has been to see that all sides of an issue are presented, but also to join you in not wanting discussion to go on and on and on. Generally, as moderators, we try to sense where you are. Occasionally, we try to let you know where we think you are. And sometimes we're right and sometimes we're wrong. And, you know, if you want to keep talking, you keep talking. Number five. The only items of substance that we can discuss and legally vote on today are the posted 14 warrant articles. We can't talk about anything else. That's what we're dealing with, those 14. Now, at the very end, when the 14 are concluded, that's when compliments to certain people might be given, or to organizations, or to things like that. But those are not legal. Okay, time limit at the mic. In fairness to all, and so will all concluding time for dinner. And let me tell you that Melissa and I are in agreement that there's no way on earth that we want to have the kind of situation we had last year that lasted for something like six and a half to seven hours. If there was anything that would drive people towards SB2, that would probably lead them to that. The time limit is three minutes. And for your final information, typically, when we start it around this time, we've concluded around 1:00 or 1:30. Today with 14 warrant articles instead of 21, that might be earlier, but who knows? I'm getting near the end here. I want to introduce the people up at the front. Finally, number seven. Oh, number seven. I want to compliment, I want to really compliment the folks at our Candidates' Night. The folks who spoke, and the folks in the audience who asked questions and responded back. It was beautiful civility. There are times in our town that we had not had civility. There have been times, Republicans versus Democrats, Democrats versus Republicans, people so enchanted with their own particular view that they couldn't hear other people's views. Jeez, I hope we're coming out of that. I hope we're coming out of that. I hope the country is going to come out of that. But in any case, I want to compliment the civility that I have seen in a number of places in our town during the past year. Okay. Introducing those at the front. On my left is the Select Board with Jennifer as Chair, Jennifer Jones. Jennifer, would you introduce the others?
Hi everyone, my name's Jen Jones. I am the Chair of the Select Board. I have with me today Andy Artimovich, who's our Vice Chair, John Morgan, Russ Kelly, who's making an entrance right now, and Paul Kleiman.
Thank you, Jennifer. And on my right is Jack Mitchell, who chairs the Budget Committee. Jack, would you introduce that group?
Yes. Good morning. Can you hear okay? The members of the Budget Committee held 120 public meetings to work through line by line Brentwood's more than 40 departments budgets. These budgets are before us today. The members of the Budget Committee are a talented group with a diversity of opinions. We are Alina Arida, Anthony Phillips, Gabby Kelly. John Morgan is our Select Board representative. Lety Badar, the School Board representative. Michelle Suenet, our Secretary. And I am Jack Mitchell, Chair. Being taxpayers ourselves, we've taken these budgets seriously. I believe the committee's work has been thorough. And its recommendations are in the best interest of maintaining what we have in Brentwood while at the same time planning for future needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. As you walk into the Town Office, there are two people at either end of the building who are absolutely key to the operation of Brentwood. One on my left is my friend, our friend, Daphne Wass, who is our Town clerk and tax collector. And where did you go, Karen? There you are. And in front of me is Karen Clements, who is our Town Administrator, particularly working with the Select Board. Again, for the third or fourth year in a row, our legal counsel today is Laura Specter Morgan. Where'd you go, Mike? There you are, right there. Good to have you back, Laura. Doug, Doug in the back row is school moderator. Right there, Doug, okay. Our Chief of Police, John, John Ben Ture. There you go, John. There you go, thank you, John. And our Chief of Fire Department, Joe Burry. Where's Joe? Okay, thank you. Town moderator, Wayne, Wayne Robinson, former Chief of Police. Thank you, Wayne. Brentwood State Representative to the New Hampshire Legislature, Eric Turp. Eric, Eric, okay. Is Andy here? No. Andy is Brentwood Director of Recreation. Director of the Mary Margaret Library, Janice. Is Janice here? Okay. And how about Ron Q., the principal of Swayze School? Sometimes, sometimes. Have I left anybody out? Other than the rest of you? Okay, okay, hey gang, we're getting near the end now. I, I welcome a motion to adopt the moderators' rules for the governance of this particular meeting. It's been moved and seconded. Do you have your hand? Any, any discussion about that? And, and even though, remember, even though you will be probably voting yes on adopting these rules, you still have a chance to challenge them if you feel in need of it. All those in favor? Excuse me? Time to move the question. All those in favor signaled by by saying aye. And all those opposed, nay. It is done. And now, I welcome a motion to dispense with a full reading of the warrant at this time. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I don't see any. All those in favor? Opposed? Nay. And now, we will proceed with warrant articles one through fourteen. And in doing that, on behalf of the town of Brentwood, I have a gavel to present.
Good morning, everyone. All right, so we're going to jump right in with warrant article number one, which was submitted by a petition. I will read the article and then ask the petitioner to speak to it. Article one, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA forty thirteen, known as SB two, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the town on the second Tuesday of March? A three-fifths majority vote is required to pass this article. So could the petitioner step forward and speak to the petition, please?
Not me, I'm returning.
Okay. Yes, please. And please just identify yourself for everyone with your name and address.
I'm Deb Cinnamon Whalen, and I'm I'm Deb Cinnamon Whalen. I live at two oh seven Pickpocket Road. And I went around in the petition to my neighbors to see if they'd support SB two. And it was very quick to fill that petition up. You know, in 2023, we had approximately thirty-two hundred registered voters. And we don't even have a single building in town that would house even a quarter of those people. They showed up to partake in town meeting. So, and I've seen a lot of signs around town, oh, don't take our town meeting away. SB two is not intended to take away our town meeting. It's only intended to allow other people to vote on what comes out of a town meeting, a discourse on a ballot, just like that, that Tuesday. So instead of the meeting being called a town meeting, it's only called a deliberative session. But it will function just like a town meeting. You have all the rights to discuss every article. You can change budgets, vote on warrants. It's, it'll just be just like it. It's only called something different. And then after all of this is hashed out at that town meeting, which they'll call the deliberative session, then instead of that being the final vote, it would go on to a town ballot where everybody has the opportunity to vote on what comes out of that town meeting slash deliberative session. It will operate just like a town meeting. So I believe that town meetings are a form of voter suppression. There's many different circumstances why somebody can't attend it, and it shouldn't be held against them. SB two allows everybody to vote on town business. Just because you can't attend a meeting doesn't mean that you don't care or that you don't want to vote. We all have, I, some people are afraid to even raise their hand and vote at town meeting, like Lois DeYoung had expressed. And that's why she wanted to have a lot of private ballots, so everybody could vote without the fear of retribution. So, you know, the ballot would, would change all of that. And now, I, I lived in East Kingston for twenty-two years. I moved here in 2011. And I always went to town meeting. I always voted. And then I had a job that required me to be there every Saturday. And so I wasn't able to vote about two additions that went on our school. I wasn't able to vote about a new fire station, truck, or the new police station they put in. I had no say in that, although as a taxpayer, I wanted to go to those meetings. So that's why I support SB two, for people to have the opportunity to vote on town matters, even if they don't make the deliberative session or, or the town meeting.
As the petitioner, can you make the official motion to adopt Article one?
So I hope you will support me in supporting Article RS forty thirteen, known as SB two.
And do we have a second for the motion? Can the person in second just stand up and identify yourself for Daphne, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we're now open for discussion. As a reminder, there's a three-minute limit. You can step forward. There's a three-minute limit on comments, and I have an able helper in Emmy who's going to let me know when you have one minute left and then when your time is up. So, step forward.
Liz Faria Southroad. So, I am totally against SB two. A town meeting and a deliberative session are totally different. There are way more Brentwood people here than went to the deliberative session for the co-op. Out of the over twenty-six thousand registered voters, just registered voters in the sixth town, two hundred and thirty-four came to that deliberative session for a budget over sixty-eight million dollars. Sixty-eight million dollars. So people are not informed. They don't come. Over eighty percent of your tax bill is the school, and the vast, vast majority of that is the middle and high
Less sixty-eight million. Oh, sorry. When you turn, we can't hear you. You distracted at me.
Sorry. So, only twenty, it's something like less than point oh oh nine percent showed up at the deliberative session. So people are not more informed. People are more informed at town meeting. I've been on a lot of boards, and mine has been changed at, at town meeting, and I'm pretty informed. I go to a lot of meetings, so. So please, please vote this down. It will change the whole dynamic of the town. Thank you.
Becky Dunn, Block Drive, Brentwood. Lived in Brentwood since nineteen seventy-five and attended dozens of town meetings. Didn't grow up with that tradition. Came out of Ohio, so this was something very new that I enjoyed. And I'm a history buff, and knowing that Thomas Jefferson, DeTocqueville, and others had said this is the purest form of democracy. Look around the room right now. Many of these people, whatever side they're on, don't see each other at all during the course of the year. This is the one time we come together as a community to deliberate, discuss, go back and forth, talk about issues, and then come to a decision that, as a group, as a majority, we think is the best for the town. That doesn't happen in an SB two forum. You look at the statistics, typically in Brentwood and towns are sized, four to six to seven percent of the voters show up for town meeting. Deliberative sessions, it's usually one to two percent. Mostly town officials who are required to be there. So deliberative session doesn't solve that problem. In these days, when most of our communication, our news, our communication with neighbors comes through that very short, quick, superficial social media on, social media format, this is the time that as a town, we can sit, you may not like what your neighbor says, but it is a chance to really express your opinion, voice your concerns, and come together as community. If we lose that, we lose that sense of community, which is over a three-hundred-year tradition here in Brentwood. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Taylor Smith, two sixty-seven South Road. I'd like to thank everyone who is able to be here. Just, I want to echo the person who put forward for this warrant article. We have three thousand three hundred ninety-nine registered voters in the town. At the last election, nine hundred ninety-eight people voted.
This, I think people are having trouble hearing it. Could you just lay it next to the microphone?
The fire marshal may disagree, but this round probably holds about five hundred people. As a mom of an extremely medically challenging child and to a child, other children that are exceptional in their own way, this guy's quieter than last meeting. I feel suppressed. I am not able to vote. We, our forefathers fought for our right to vote. Women, you know, people of color, we all have fought and earned the right to vote. And without SB two, I can't stay during an entire meeting. I'm glad other people can, but that's not a luxury I can afford. Please do not suppress my vote. Thank you.
Julia Anderson, twenty-five, Phoebe Drive. First, thank you, Dick. SB, SB two, or Senate Bill two, was instituted by the state legislature in nineteen ninety-five because of concerns that modern lifestyles have made it difficult to attend traditional town meetings. As of December twenty, twenty twenty, seventy-two New Hampshire towns have adopted SB two. As been mentioned a couple times now, there are three hundred, three thousand three hundred ninety-nine registered voters in Brentwood. Nine hundred ninety-eight voted on Tuesday, about thirty percent. Not a great turnout, but likely greater, a greater percentage of voters than are here today. So who's here today? Voters who are vested in town decision-making and have the opportunity, maybe even the luxury, to be here today for hours or the whole day like last year. Who's not here today? Voters who are vested in town decision-making and don't have the opportunity to be here today for hours or the whole day. Those are voters who have to work, voters who have ill family members, voters who have compromised immune systems, those who are traveling for work or leisure, voters who are taking a college or training course, voters who are homebound, voters whose children have school and activity commitments, voters who cannot commit to the hours it takes to get through all the warrant articles. Last year, we were here all day. In previous years, three, four, and five hours. These meetings can be physically and emotionally exhausting. If you have attended in past years, you know.
You have one minute.
If you're here for the last time, you'll, if you're here for the first time, you'll learn. My biggest concern is there is no opportunity for an absentee ballot for today's items. Considering the attendance on election days versus town meeting days, voters of these warrant articles, voting on these warrant articles on election day would increase the percentage of voters who decide these issues and maybe even bring out more voters. As we've heard, SB two would require a deliberative session that takes place earlier in the year, allow time for discussion, debate, and possible amendments. Then results could go out to voters who could attend, who could not attend deliberation and allow them time to gather more information, make a decision, and be ready to vote in March on election day when there is greater opportunity for voter participation. More voters, more democratic. Vote yes for SB two.
Step forward.
Not a public speaker, so I hope I don't mess up.
Can you just state your name and address, please?
Sure. Nula Leon, two Linden Drive. My first question, or notice, this is a sixty percent to pass. Typically, it's fifty-one percent. So I would wonder where that comes from.
It's, it's statutory.
Second point is voting is seven AM to seven PM on election day, which gives people a great opportunity to vote. Here, it's nine AM. The meeting's not really well advertised. There was thirty percent voters, and on election day, there's approximately ten percent now. I checked about three hundred out of three thousand three hundred. So one-third of the thing. And I think that's my point, seven AM to seven PM. Pretty chance to vote. Not a great chance here. Three times the voter, and fifty-one versus sixty percent to pass. So thank you.
Bill Dunham, speaking as a private citizen, nine Block Drive, Brentwood. Madam Moderator, congratulations on your new position. When I think about SB two, I think it's important for everybody in this room to understand that SB, although it means Senate Bill, take that S and instead look upon it as special interest group. S stands for special interest groups. And if you want to take a look at an example of what we have just voted for at the school budget meeting, you have just inherited an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar solar panel display, which, and here's an example, Madam Moderator, of the advertisement that was given out to everybody. This is the posting in front of the school, and it reads as follows. Solar Power Info Meeting, December eighteen. When I was a kid growing up outside of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, we were always told to make a presentation based upon who, what, where, when, or why. Well, this tells me when, but it doesn't tell me anything else about this solar power presentation that fourteen hundred fifty households in Brentwood could have attended. I'm not sure exactly how this information was given to everybody, but the special interest groups who wanted this solar power present, this solar power display, as well as the aspiring politicians who would like to put this on their personal resume, this is something which apparently appealed to them, and it is also something which apparently they had access to in terms of information.
Can you connect your remarks to the article that's under consideration?
And. Okay, thank you for the guidance from the audience.
And you have one minute.
Okay. Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, you now own it, ladies and gentlemen. And nobody in this room can tell you how much it's going to cost to get rid of it. So, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars is an example of a special interest group item that you have purchased. And it is something that from here on in, as you peel away the layers of the onion, ask yourself, how are the special interest groups going to advertise future SB two meetings? And it's going to be just like this. You're not going to have a wide display of information anywhere. Vote no on SB two. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Jessica Valukas, seventy-four Scrabble Road. I thought it was a good point that people point out that we literally do not have a building that can accommodate all the registered voters in this town. And I just wanted to point out that turnout does seem to be increasing with more effort for people to know about this meeting, which is great. But then we have the problem of standing room only and people standing in front of other people. And I have to wonder, how accurate is the counting going to be when we have all these people crammed into a small space and people standing in front of other people? And last year, we had so many secret ballots that dragged this meeting on for seven hours. And if we're going to be doing secret votes anyway, why not do it via ballot? Where we have better turnout, better accuracy with the counting. That's my major concern today, is that, like, how accurate is it going to be when we hold up these cards and we're doing a quick count across the room? So I think that's an important consideration, and I support SB two. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Moderator. My name is Julie Belivas, and I'm at sixty-two Lyford Lane. I am going to say flat out I'm against SB two. The reason being is the room right now is completely packed of Brentwood voters. I, as someone who's lived here for fifteen years, have sat in many school board meetings, have sat in many, many deliberative sessions. This turnout here today is never at deliberative sessions during school stuff. So I would say everybody needs to think about SB two very hard because once you do SB two, you cannot go back. It's very difficult. It's very difficult to do so. And if the town realizes, oops, SB two is not what we want, it's very, very difficult to go back. So everybody that showed up here today, and I keep hearing numbers of all about how many voters are here in Brentwood, everybody has a difficult situation. It's very understandable. Some people can't make it do the jobs, some people can be here all day. That's wonderful, but at the end of the day, this is the only meeting that our, most of our town people can try to at least get here to be with their neighbors, to express their opinions, and that is why I do not support SB two. Thank you.
Duck Finn, 100 over. This is a tough one. There's a lot of feeling both ways, and I always try to make an informed decision one way or another. I did some investigating, and this is more based on the information that I have found out. I started off with a public broadcasting broadcast that I sent out to a couple of people to make sure my interpretation was right, but it was a panel of three SB two towns and two other town meeting towns that got together. They were asked questions in reference to whether or not it was a good thing or a bad thing. And SB two, the people that were in favor for it, they said, yes, the deliberative session was a very good thing. But what seemed to happen is it started off with a bang, and then there were a limited amount of people that were attending. Then, town meeting people, very supportive, traditional type of situation, everybody was on board with it, even though people couldn't make it. The point was that there was enough time for everybody to make arrangements to go to the town meeting and participate if they wanted to. The interesting part about that whole radio broadcast was at the end, the moderator had asked whether or not the SB two people, whether or not they would continue with it. One of the people that had SB two, absolutely continued with it. The other two were very hesitant in their answer, because once you do it, you can't go back. I'm sorry.
One minute.
So it led me for pause. And overall, I'm a traditionalist. I am not in favor of SB two. The other information that was given about the 72 towns, that is true, but 3% of the number, people do not, would like to go back. One is active right now, Bethlehem. They are actively looking to go back to town meeting. I don't know what that all says. We're close, we're divided, but if you're considering it, go with the town meeting.
My first question, so Gabby Kelly, 86 Mohawk Lane. I've heard people say that we can't go back, and I wanted to just make a note that that's not true. And I'd like to get the formal what it takes.
Good morning. Laura Specter Morgan from the Mitchell Municipal Group. I am not a Brentwood town resident, but I've been asked to speak. So the process to go back is pretty much exactly the same as the process to adopt it, except--
More than a month she's not been granted the authority--
The moderator's rules allow town officials and council to speak on, to questions without consent of the voters.
So the process is pretty much identical to what you're going through to adopt it, except the question goes on the official ballot rather than being voted on at deliberative session, obviously.
Thank you, Council. So I'm speaking as a private citizen, as a member of the budget committee or any other member in the town. Like Town Council just said, that it is not, it's relative. What's SB two is hard to adopt because it takes three-fifths majority. It's also hard to, quote unquote, un-adopt because it takes three-fifths majority. I also want to speak to the fact of being a traditionalist or in favor of the history. If we all did, voted in favor of being traditional or in favor of history, women might not have the right to vote, because that was, you know, traditional at some point in time. And although I do think there are many pros and cons of SB two, we are not allowing everybody who has a vote in this town to vote on Town Matters. Thank you.
Becky Dunham again. Just to follow up on a couple of things people said, there's discussion about how you reverse an SB two. I know it is a three-fifths majority of the 72 towns or one-third of New Hampshire towns who have SB two. Three have reversed that process, and half of the towns that are SB two have tried to reverse the process, and it's been unable. You can look at statistics, you can follow the statistics. The point about the number of people who show up at deliberative, an elected official in a town next to us, not Fremont, said that at the first deliberative session, there would be 50 people, and this town is a bigger town than ours. The second deliberative session the following year, hmm, 20 people showed up. The third session, 19 people were there, and most of them were town officials elected that were required to be there. So deliberative sessions don't always offer the opportunity. And the last part about being traditional, Brentwood has always welcomed people of all backgrounds to be involved in town concerns, elected as town officials. Even the Grange that was here in 1892, women could be officers at that time even without the national vote. So we have always welcomed people to participate and be involved regardless. Thank you.
My name is Reagan Elliott.
Do you have a card? Thank you.
My name is Reagan Elliott. I live at 63 Scrabble Road in Brentwood. I really tried to understand the deliberative, what that meant. But then the first person who came up, I think it was, who said, there is nothing different between the two except what we call it. That confused me. So I don't know what the deliberative session is. Does it have back and forth like this? Or is it just voting? I mean, I don't get it. And so I guess I'm saying--
Sure, Town Council can explain the difference to you. I go to a lot of deliberative sessions at the end of January and beginning of February, and in a lot of ways, it is identical to a traditional town meeting. You discuss all the warrant articles, you can amend all the warrant articles. The only thing you don't do at deliberative session is vote on whether or not to pass the articles. You can step forward.
Kathy Goresale, Scrabble Road, for 40 years.
Can you tilt the microphone just so everyone can hear you?
I've attended meetings for 40 years, and I'm not disagreeing with any of the statistics about how many people turn out to vote when or where. I think it is absolutely true that more people vote when they can do it on a ballot. I also think it's true that fewer people attend the deliberative session, which is your opportunity. And I would take fewer informed voters voting over many more people voting blindly all day long. And I am in favor of continuing with our town meeting.
Paul Kleiman, Diane McCain Drive. So today is, I guess I'm thought of as an eternal optimist by some, and I feel like today should be a new day. And what makes town meeting work are three things, in my opinion. One is respect for your neighbor and their differing opinions. I have a neighbor in the back, and he and I--
Nobody can hear you if you turn around.
Yep. Brett, Kelly and I will have differing opinions, but we respect each other greatly. That's what makes, one thing that makes town meeting work. I think respect by the person who is speaking. So it means coming to this mic with some preparation and being on point to what is being discussed, because that is respectful to everyone in the audience, and to do so in a concise manner. And thirdly, respect for the process. And in terms of the process, what I mean is not, or being very sparingly using the secret ballot process. Because if we're going to go into secret ballot all the time, then what's the point? So in my opinion, that should be reserved for significant extraordinary type of questions. I think if we can live by those rules, then I think this process can work. But today will be the experiment. So I'm here today to keep this town meeting, but I'd like it to work. I don't want it to be broken anymore.
Hi, Linda Gary, Michael Bennett Road. Couple things. One, on the deliberative session, I have attended deliberative sessions for the co-op school board. I think that while the attendance there may be less, as Liz pointed out earlier, maybe people don't care as much about the school issues as they do the town issues. The point about a deliberative session is it's your choice whether you attend a deliberative session or not, just as it's your choice if you're going to town meeting or not. And if we care about our town issues, we can still go to the deliberative session. And as our council pointed out, you still have the exact same opportunity to discuss the issues, come to the microphone, and have the same back and forth. The only difference is you don't make that final vote, yea or nay. That goes to the ballot, where everybody can vote, whether absentee or present. We get a much higher turnout in that final vote. So I'm in favor of SB two. And the other thing I wanted to say is that sometimes people are more concerned about showing their yea or nay votes. And last year, last year, there were a lot of private, secret ballots. SB two allows every vote to be secret and private. And the last point I wanted to make is whether we have the three-fifths vote today, if we want to adopt it, it's the same three-fifths vote to un-adopt it. Just because other towns haven't changed, that doesn't mean you can't change it. It just means more people in those towns didn't want to change it, and we should keep that in mind. It works because we have that constitutional ability to change it if we want to, and if three-fifths of our town wants it today and three-fifths next year doesn't want it, it changes. It's the same process, and it doesn't mean you can't change it. I think we should try it, and I think it's worth it, and I really like the idea of expanding the opportunity for more people to vote, including those that can't be here today and those that want to otherwise absentee. Thank you very much.
My name is Tim Diaz, 6 Partial Lane. I've been to my share of town meetings, and I would just like to point out, but I can only speak for myself, but I'm capable of talking to my neighbors about issues, and I'm capable of doing research on budgets. And the assumption that not attending a deliberative session makes a voter ignorant is just that, an assumption.
I'm Kat Nemirovsky, 29 Robinson, and this has been kind of piggyback off the last two people who just spoke, which is kind of nice. But yeah, so fewer people are probably going to attend the deliberative session, but also what's the actual percentage of people here who are going to get up and talk and make their voices heard? A lot of us have had to make, like, hortillion efforts to either bring our kids or rearrange other activities to be here today. And the reason why more people are going to turn out to this than a deliberative session is because we want to vote. Also, all of these are, well, all the meetings are available on YouTube, so people don't need to be less informed. They can still watch the deliberative session just on a time that maybe works for their schedule, you know? Yeah, so it's more flexible, it's more democratic. Having a deliberative session versus a town meeting doesn't necessarily mean less informed voters. It just means, you know, we're getting our information in a different way, and then more people can actually have their voices heard in the vote.
Jim Asher, 33 Mohawk Lane. Actually, I just wanted to make a clarification, because she said there is a difference, and I guess I've read the difference between how the warrants work with the deliberative, but I thought there was something different with the budget. Like, we vote on the budget here, and we can make changes to the budget. But like--
So, yeah, no one's leaving here today until you adopt a budget. When you are an SB two town, you don't necessarily have that option, because if everyone votes down the operating budget, you need some sort of budget to run the town. So what you get in SB two town is called the default budget. And the default budget is exactly the same as the previous year's budget with certain adjustments for contracts that are expiring or positions that have been eliminated, things like that. So yes, there is a budgetary difference. You will have a budget. It's just when you vote, you're either going to vote yes for the operating budget or no on the operating budget, and then you get the default budget. Sometimes those budgets are a big amount apart, but more often than not, they're pretty close to each other.
I mean, I'm curious, like, here, we can actually make motions of things on budget? Are we allowed to do that under SB two?
Yes, at a deliberative session.
At deliberative session, people can change the budget.
Correct, yes, absolutely. Sorry.
Thank you.
Jeff Garber, Scrabble Road. My question is about the budget as well, and I'm not sure that the question is really answered. Once the default budget is established, does that mean that there is, even at a deliberative session, that the budget cannot go below that default amount?
No, no, not at all. In fact, you can amend the operating budget at deliberative session to be whatever you want in SB two town, and there are actually situations I've seen where the operating budget that is proposed is less than the default budget. So yes, you still have the absolute option to amend your operating budget as much as you want at deliberative session.
So the budgeting, the budgeting aspect of that will be, it's limited to--
Can you direct your questions to me? Sorry.
So the ability to make that change in the budget, we've already heard that fewer people show up to deliberative sessions than town meetings like this one. So that means that those budgets and the budget adjustments are going to be left to a lower number of voters, decreasing the amount of input that voters who attend meetings like this have an opportunity to make adjustments to budgets. So on that basis, I would be opposed to the adoption of SB two.
I have a question.
Can you just state your name and address, please?
Jean Gag in Middle Road. I have no balance in which way I'm going yet. Question. This is obviously very crowded in here. Is there any laws and regulations to why we can't go next to our high school and have it there? Just asking, that's it.
Town Council tells me no, there is no regulations about where the meeting has to be held.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Jack and his budget committee for a great job. I am against SB two. We have the privilege and the right and ultimate democracy to vote, and our individual vote is counted, unlike giving our vote to councilman or whoever. And I did know it, Dick-- And I did know it, Dick, but 283 years, let's make it 284. Thank you.
Liz Trivia, South Road. I would love to see, especially those who are for SB2, all of you to come to the co-op meeting next year. Co-op meeting next year, which is always during the first week of February. It hasn't been set yet for next year. If this number of Bramwood residents came, the budget would be around 66 million instead of 68 something million. So I encourage you to come next year. The budget difference is huge, whether you're SB2 or town meeting. And we already have SB2. We already know that it doesn't work at the co-op. So please, please show up next year if you're for SB2, whether this passes or not. And there's a big difference between the default and what the people do here today. I move the question.
Okay, I see no one in line. Oh, no, one person in line. So I'm going to let her speak and then we'll vote on who gets the question.
Hi guys, Taylor Smith, 267 South Road. Sorry, second time you're hearing from me. Very happy this guy's got it. Thank you again for everyone who can be here. But something that just boiled my blood is the word privilege. It is a privilege to be here. I do not have that privilege to stay today. Please do not suppress my vote. Please vote for SB2. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to move the question. I didn't catch who seconded it, so. You got it? Okay. All right, so all those in favor of moving the question, raise your hands. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so we're ready to vote on SB2. Daphne is going to explain some procedural issues connected to the vote.
There are two boxes on either side. You need to bring your red card with you. It will be hole punched and then you will be given a ballot. Once you have voted, if you can, please come back to your seats as quickly as possible so we can move on. We will then move the two boxes together so that there will not be a chance that somebody will stick something in there that is not SB2 going forward. And it does, it needs to stay open for one hour starting now.
Folks, it looks like people are done voting. If you could take your seats, we can move on to the next article, the SB2 article for names of- Folks, please take your seats. Votes, please take your seats. Okay, so as a reminder, the voting on SB2 remains open until 11:23 this morning. We've moved both ballot boxes over to the table on the left. So if you have not voted and you need to, you can do so at the table on the left as long as it's done by 11:23 a.m. In the meantime, we're going to move on to Article 2. That's the General Municipal Operations Budget. This is recommended by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,298,762 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations in special or individual articles that are addressed separately. A majority vote is required to pass this. Do we have a motion for Article 2?
Motion.
Okay, and the Select Board can speak to the articles and then the Budget Committee will speak as to their recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. For Article 2, General Municipal Operations, as noted, we are in favor of a budget of $6,298,762. One quick housekeeping item, for those of you who have a town report in your hand, this page that was separate over by the door that you came in is a corrected, page 99. So if you use page 99 to compare this year's budget to last year's budget, please use the corrected. There was a spreadsheet typographical error on the one that is in the town report, so please refer to the corrected version. I wanted to start by just thanking Russ Kelly, who is a Select Board member that will be meeting our board, and thank you for all his hard work, including in the budget process. And, thank you. I wanted to also make a couple of general comments about the budget. There are some common areas of confusion that come up about the town budget, and we had a presentation at our Select Board meeting in February to try to clear up some confusion and make sure people really understand what the budget is and how the budget works. The budget that we're asking you to approve today represents the maximum possible appropriation that we can raise for taxes. It does not necessarily mean that we will appropriate that exact dollar value. It is the cap, the maximum amount that we could appropriate if we end up needing all of those appropriations to run the town. And I think sometimes there's a misconception that if our budget goes up, that that means that your taxes go up the same percentage. And I think it's really important, and I think the Budcom will speak to us as well, to understand that that is not the case. Our town has grown, there's been new buildings, new neighborhoods, the tax base has increased. And for anyone who got their taxes last year, you're aware that while our budget increased last year by 8.7%, your municipal taxes decreased by 9.8%. That's approximately $168 on a $400,000 house. So, really important to understand that the budget only reflects what can be spent. It does not reflect revenues that come into our town and does not reflect other sources of funding like impact fees, ARPA, etc. So when you think about the budget, please remember to think of it as an appropriation bill and that it is, there's other moving parts that impact your taxes. In terms of the change of this year from last year, please use the corrected page 99 and you'll see that this year's budget is approximately $943,000 higher than last year. I'd like to explain some of that increase. $101,534 of that has already been approved by this legislative body last year when you voted to approve an additional police officer. Last year, that was a standalone warrant. This year, it moves into the regular budget. So $100,000 of that amount is the police officer. And a very important detail is that $350,000 for paving of town roads had been a standalone warrant in the past and the Select Board and Budcom agreed to move that into our regular operating budget. We consider paving of town roads to be an obligation to the town and wanted to put that into the regular budget. So about half of the budget increase is those two items alone, the police officer and paving of roads. The remainder of the increase, the bulk of it, is an increase in our insurance premiums for town employees. There is some increase in the police and highway budgets. The police increase is partly due to promotions of a sergeant and a corporal. And you'll see if you look at page 99, some other areas of small increases across various departments, some of which reflects cost of living adjustments for our employees. So, our board and the Budcom advise you strongly to pass this budget, which as I said, reflects the maximum possible appropriations. We cannot tell you what the actual tax impact is on your tax bill until we set the tax rate this coming October or November. So I will, at this point, turn it over to Budcom to make their comments on this budget and express our deep appreciation for them for all of their help during budget season.
Mr. Mitchell?
Testing one, two. I'd just like to comment on a committee for a moment before I turn to this article. Today, after this meeting, we heard retirement from the committee. Even before he was elected to the committee, Anthony Phillips was advocating for a capital improvements program for Brentwood. He saw it working in other towns and wanted us to have it here. His persistence has paid off, and this year, we in the Select Board had an up-to-date CIT to work with. It was, is, and will be especially useful for planning around the larger, longer-term projects being considered. Thank you, Anthony, for your three years and all those spreadsheets with the Budget Committee. And finally, a special thank you to our board reps, Lenny from school and John from the Select Board. We appreciate their contributions. Now, if I can have slide 2. Yes, okay, they're telling me I have to do that myself. We'll see. Article 2 is recommended by the Budget Committee. I'd like to take a moment to comment on it. Long ago, I had a boss whose good advice was, when looking at finances, to start with the bottom line. So let's do that now. Here, we're focusing on just the town portion of the budget. As you can see on the bottom line, combining proposed appropriations for the town operating budget and town warrant articles results in an overall increase of 6% compared to the prior year. Now, let's look at the town operating budget by itself. The operating budget is made up of 40 departments, each with their own budget. The total of those budgets is the amount shown here, also known as appropriations or expected expenses. The change is the dollar increase in comparison to the prior year. The percent change is 9%. This reflects inflation in our costs as well as growth in our town. Okay, so what specifically is in that 9%? This is an important slide. It accounts for 75% of the increase. The departments are listed in descending order by size of dollar increase. I'll read because I'm not sure everyone can see. The largest increase is in healthcare, which is up 39% due to a 15% increase in rates and changes in employee selection. To mitigate future increases, we're exploring joining a teachers group which has lower rates. Second largest increase is police, up 10% with a new full-time officer, software, K-9 support, and increased prosecutor duties. Highway is up 7% in salaries, vehicle repairs, and new building utilities. Government buildings is up because general building maintenance has been consolidated here. General government is up 70% to include a grant writer, absentee ballots, and $20,000 for unplanned events or disasters. Library is up 7% with salaries, books...